Any changes to the agenda?
No, believe it or not.
So can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So much.
Motion by Lindsey, is there a second?
Second.
Hi Bobby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same as aye. No one is down for public comments or communications, but not everybody's signed on it. Does anybody want to speak that's not on there yet? No? Okay. Thank you. Alright, we will move along to the board committee reports.
I attended Community Ed last week. So we had policy on Monday night. I think that went very well. We just tabled one. 620, and you were gonna check on legal? Was that correct, or?
That's what we have back tonight.
And you get, yeah, there's another one on 620.
620, yeah. Okay. And I typed you guys up, the Community Ed kinda updates. It was a very long meeting, it was two hours. I wanna thank Sandy and Raleigh for sitting and listening in as well. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things here, you guys can read through it. You know, summer rec was well attended by students this summer. A survey will be sent out to parents regarding summer programs shortly. Fundraising, just to highlight, Community Ed Steak Fry, they have set a date for March 23rd of 2018. Post-prom, just met here starting up with the junior parents on the 22nd, starting the event. Just to highlight, last year's concessions raised around $50,000. Which is amazing support from our community using, utilizing the concession stands. Policy, 905.5 fundraising concessions. Community Ed Director would like clarification of track and field, dance and cross-country should be added to that policy as it's just football, basketball, volleyball right now. Facilities, Community Ed does all the facility scheduling, will ramp up here when basketball season starts. Concerns that some students have been in the gym unsupervised, so Community Ed Director will now give names of students to superintendent and A.D. to deal with. On top of all your other fun stuff, Brian. Bike fleet, we approved that, I'm sorry, that was a typo. We approved that in March. The bike trailer has arrived, and 40 track bikes and safety equipment have been purchased through Shields. 10% of the 25,000 of the grant was set aside for maintenance. Mr. Critchley is going to be the one that's gonna be trained on the curriculum coming in September. They are gonna be targeting the 5th grade students to use the bikes initially. And it sounds like more of this is gonna be more rolled out next summer. They're gonna figure out like how to market it to the community, whether it's like Boy Scouts or during different community events. Rebel Store, gonna be open during home games. The Advisory Council approved two new logos that they were gonna go with. Community Ed can be reached to open the store as needed during the daytime hours for individuals wishing to purchase Rebel gear. And then I think the Rebel online store has opened, and that will be open for two to three week increments. Am I correct on that Sandy?
Yep.
Where did that email, anybody remember that email? Like two to three weeks at a time, and then they'll close, fill those orders, and then open back up. Corporate sponsorship program, there was a lengthy discussion on this. Community Ed Director and A.D. have been working together with this idea. Question was raised to the Advisory Council, how, or Advisory Committee, how to proceed with this program. Recommendation from the Advisory Group is to have discussions with clubs. Booster Club, baseball, softball, Dollars for Scholars, or any other clubs that do fundraising. I shared with the Advisory Committee that we as a school board had been addressed by the Booster Club President regarding the concerns about this program. I guess the question I have is what do we as a board want to see happen with fundraising in our community? You know, we have a great volunteer group, you know, with the Booster Club, Glenanville Home Parents Organization, and Do With PTA that raise a lot of money for our schools and give back. So I think this is a discussion we have to have in the future regarding what has to happen with that. Drivers Ed, Mr. Vassler and Mrs. Lopez are both retiring from teaching behind the wheel, thank them for their service. I'm surprised they made it all these years, but they've done a great job, so thank you guys. So Community Ed's still gonna offer the classroom instruction, discussions on how to proceed with behind the wheel, possible solutions will be available later on. E.T.M., question brought up, it'd be possible to have an E.T.M. located in the high school lobby? I think that comes down to you Brian and Cindy, and what you guys end up deciding if that's a viable thing for us to have or not. So that's the discussion that's being had. And then financials for Community Ed, waiting for the auditors to complete the review and final numbers will be available in the coming months. So, sorry for the long notes, I have like 11 pages of notes, is this, anybody have any questions?
Yeah. The Booster Club, the... That works separate than the corporate sponsorship, doesn't it?
Correct.
Okay. I was gonna say, 'cause I know a lot of schools have both, they just, the Booster Club is, one does fundraising like, you know, like one paid for the scoreboard essentially, correct? The sponsorship, that paid for the scoreboard.
They sponsored one.
One tile.
Yeah, one tile. We do the, a lot of schools do that, I work at one. But the Booster Club is more at a, I guess more at a site level, I guess, funding. And then...
The Booster Club, like, what they spend their money on?
Yeah.
Like, the examples I've been given, you know, they, Nicole Lightner was there that night, and she was representing the Booster Club. And she just stated, you know, they give to whatever the need is in the school, whether it's from a classroom needing a smart board, to the gymnasium needing new chairs for the basketball team, or, you know, donating $5,000 to buy a tile on our scoreboard, so...
And they always put on the athletic banquet.
Yep, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for saying that. So they do that three times a year? They do fall, winter, or spring?
Winter and spring.
Fall, winter, spring, so three?
Three.
Yeah.
I mean, they can both coexist, can they not?
Pardon me?
They can both coexist, it's fine, can't they?
I would think so. It's just long as we just make it so they aren't...
Micromanaging one of them?
Right.
I think the concerns that I hear is that you're going after the same sponsors, the same donors. You know, Dollars for Scholars is out there asking for money to put on their calendar and help pay for things, and then would this be going out and soliciting the same people? Do you know what I mean?
Sure.
So, I think that the discussions just need to be had with all the players around the table, what's right for DGF, and where do we want to go from there? You know, like I said, the Booster Club and the parents groups in our school, our kids are very fortunate, and we're really lucky to have such great volunteers that do the work and give back to our school. So...
Thank you Lindsey.
Yep.
Move on to the superintendent report.
A lot of things are in the action items, a few things that I, and when we get to the long-term facility maintenance, I'm gonna walk you through that because that is something that is pretty unique for the first time that you see it. So, I won't waste time on that one yet. Couple things from MSBA, you probably have seen some information coming on the workshop that MSBA has available down St. Cloud on the Trust Edge. Those of you who have been on the board over the last, suppose it would've been two or three years ago, the person that this is based on for that Trust Edge Leadership Institute was, you know, this David Horzager. He was one of the speakers at MSBA, I believe it was three years ago. So this is his work. And again, it isn't cheap, it's not something that definitely works for everybody, it's just a question of whether the board, you know, we can have MSBA come up and do some things for the whole board. Otherwise, this is a Sunday, Monday in St. Cloud. You know, initially, we thought it was gonna be a Saturday or Friday night Saturday, but it's a Sunday, Monday all day. And then it's 200 and some dollars, 295, and then you get the hotel rooms and all that kinda stuff. You know, it becomes a little bit more spendy unless it's something that is on the radar. But I want you to at least have it in case there was an interest from the board, to send a representative or something like that. But, or it can be as simple as starting with just getting the book. You know, we can get copies of the book for the whole board. And, because those of you who've been on the board, I think there was those books before available, but that's something we could order. Everything is based on his book. Okay? So, again, just an FYI. Another professional development piece. This is something, I've touched on it before, and you're gonna probably, you know, feel free, please, and I think some of the admin team will probably speak about it. One thing that has been definitely lacking, we just, and it's, it's, it's as much my error as anybody's, if not more, is not promoting and pushing for more professional development for the whole leadership team, the admin cabinet. So, as I've been involved with the American Association of School Administrators cohort that I'm doing this year, the opportunity came up to have the presenter from Giant Worldwide, actually, that does some of these things with the Ted Talks and such, Dr. Hill, come up and work directly with our full cabinet team. So all of our licensed administrators, our community ed, our tech director, basically all of the players that would be directly involved at the admin level making those, that level decision on instruction. And so putting them through training, and providing professional development training all year long. So this isn't one of those one-time PD opportunities. This is ongoing professional development opportunities. It's about learning a little bit more about what maximizes each individual's efforts to make the team that much, function that much more efficiently, and much larger capacity. I think the workshop, the first day today was indicative of that. It came about the way we did it, partly because of this. So we had two days of working with Dr. Hill. And through this process, and we went through the first two modules basically, and it'll be ongoing year-long training. Some of it will be through digital meetings, Zoom meetings that we'll be doing. Half-hour segments through, as part of our admin team meetings where we'll have him be in over the, over the internet. And then part of it will be another one day where he'll be coming back in June, but, and then all of the ongoing professional development resources that are available. So, this, the total cost of this, none of this is going through any exemplary professional development, it's just coming directly through a combination of the district-wide, non-exemplary professional development. And the other part is, one of the requirements that we have, brand-new with World's Best Workforce Planning, is putting a plan together on our, on all of our accelerated type of programming, gifted and talented and such. So part of that is being addressed through this process also, some of the expanding of programming. So everything that we're doing with the goal-setting and the reorganization is linked indirectly with this. The expansion of communication and such, it is all hand-in-hand with our district goals. So it's the first time we've ever, you know, but you'll hear from some of them, because it was really, I know for myself, and I've told Sandy this, that, you know, I saw this as being one of the best team-building professional developments that I've been part of as far as an admin team. So I really think we're gonna get a lot of bang for the buck out of this.
Wasn't he a soup down in like Sartell?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. He, and he'd been a principal bef, you know, funny part was, and I didn't know this, he'd been a principal working in the Alex system before. So, you know, that whole alignment and what else not, they've, you know, it's given some pretty good background. So, anyway, I want you to be aware of that. Some other things that are, I know when we get done tonight, those of us that are involved, or those of you, the negotiations, planning, have to take a look at that as far as figuring when you wanna start looking at setting a date and time to maybe get together. And so that I've got an idea on a timeline to help me, you know, prioritize, when do I need to work on the language to bring to you guys? Because it's just like anything else, there's lists, and you try to figure, okay, prioritize what's the highest. And if I know something we need to meet next week, or the week after, then I'll know when to get the stuff ready. Okay? Where it sits on that priority chain. So that's one. All of you, you that are on the policy committee, again, we know that we were gonna table, we tabled 620. So that was good news anyway that we had tabled it. I gave you a new copy because lo and behold, MSBA came out with a brand-new one, even after we've already been working on the 2015 one. And this will be important for the high school staff in particular, because the changes in the 2017 session that are pertinent for this policy are involved with weighted grading. And this has come about because of, they want to know what school districts are doing to delineate between PSEO coursework, AP coursework, college and high school coursework, and if you give different weighting on all of these different factors, of all these different types. And you have to identify, if you have weighted grading, what your rate of weighting is, and if there is a difference between them. So this, this is one of those policies that we definitely, as we look at the committee structure and making sure that we have certified staff involvement on these, so that we don't have that alignment issue that we've seen before with the handbooks compared to the policies. Moving forward, we shouldn't, because we'll have that involvement in the process when we do these reviews. So we wanna get those recommendations coming directly from the high school leadership, as far as what their suggestions are, we have to have it on the weighted grading as we walk through this. So 620 is one of those, we're gonna table for a while until we get those recommendations. There's no point in putting something in that is gonna be off. Make sense?
Yep.
Okay. And last, when we get done with the meeting tonight, anybody wants to see any of the video clips of the stuff from the back-to-school? Some fun clips that were shown, Heidi and Mary Ann in particular just knocked it out, parked this morning, just did a great job. It was, it was nice for me to be able to come in and just work on more of some of the big ideas without going into a lot of the data, and let the people that are very good with the nurturing voice take the lead with that. So, they did a, they just did an outstanding job and selected some very good video clips, getting the focus back on kids. For all of us, you know, on the decision-making. Last thing, just an FYI, more than anything, because you may get asked questions by community and what else not. Update, you don't usually go into a lot of things on, updates on staff members, except in a leadership role like Ms. Hanson is. She will be on leave, medical leave, until the 18th is the tentative timeline coming back. We will be keeping the staff updated if we have a change in that, it will not be earlier than the 18th, that's the earliest return. I will show you some things when we, when I get into, I'll show you a couple of the documents that we're utilizing to help disseminate those tasks that need to be done, both with the leadership team at the site, and also between the whole administrative cabinet, working those tasks. So, we've got plans in place. It may be longer, if it is, we'll just keep approaching it in two-week intervals until she returns. So, but right now, again, it's gonna be, it's always crazy until school gets going. People are wondering who's gonna be getting this and that and that, and that's the way it usually is, and the one thing with, when you have veteran staff, people are used to having to go with the flow, and, you know, and we have very good leadership at the site level that can adapt for that, so... So we'll be, we'll be in good shape. Okay? That's it for now.
Alright. I've got 6.3, the district goals.
And we're gonna get some help with some of this, so basically, what we've done is we've taken, we've taken the, back in the work session back in March, the board came up with three, basically, bigger ideas, concepts to work on putting for district goals that we've been working on. So what you're gonna see now is basically the verbiage, and I think what I'll probably do is just go right to the PowerPoint so that you can see the verbiage that we put in. So this morning, of course, we went back to the mission statement, belief statements, 'cause we wanted to show everybody how this stuff is all linked directly back, why we're here in the first place. And the fact that this is all right back about students. So here is, based on those three larger ideas in the goal statements for, and again, these are yearly, these are gonna be more than three to five year. Increase student achievement, career readiness through aligned academic programming is identified in annual World's Best Workforce Plans. Build and strengthen community and culture through a focus on positive relationships. That is, was a big part of the day with the staff. With all staff, students, and families. And you'll see that as we go into the committee's restructuring process. Create short and long-term district facility plans that focus on student enrollment, programming, and safety and security. So, I'm gonna just show in general, here's how the action planning will happen. So from what the board, from those discussions then, and you saw some of the stuff that Terry had come up with as that back a couple of months ago. So if you notice, what we're doing is we've got the school district goals, and so I'm gonna go back, 'cause a lot of this will not become public. I'm gonna explain that, because of what's involved in these. The superintendent goals are public. Okay? The district goals, the superintendent goals, because you evaluate, that's public. I can ask to have, or just like any other employee, you go into a closed session unless I want it to be public for going over the eval. Now, what we're doing with all of the admin team is we've got particular goals that are identified. Heidi has, you know, we've left some of these pieces out for now, but here's what it's looking like for all of them. We take the district goals, and then each of the sites coming up with their site goals. And then the responsibility at the principal level will be identified, so that you've got alignment for the administrator. So you got the alignment for the administrator, you got the indicators of progress for the sites. So this year, starting this year, every administrator, when you have those site reports, not only just bringing people in to, let's say we have staff members that are gonna come in, present, okay, we've got the admin program, here's what's going on and such. Every time you have reports, you can expect that the principals are gonna be coming in, or the leadership, about what's going on with the site goals as reporting. So we're coming back, always in those reports, right back, so that you know that there's action plans, and so that when people, if you hear, or the rumor mill is, that things aren't getting done, and we're not sticking to timelines, these are all identified. This is what I'm working with evaluation with the whole admin team. So as we have principal goals, we got indicators of progress for the site, we got indicators of progress for the individual administrator. And then, as we go through that, we continue, and then you notice, we've got timeline, and then the progress, the indicator of progress, that's what gets disseminated publicly at board meetings. So as we're going through these action plans, you guys will be getting updates from those sites, so that we see the alignment all the way through to the public. Questions? We're trying to make sure that we are aligning all of the goals in the action plans to the leadership work that needs to be done at the site level, the site leadership teams, what are the indicators? And see, then what I do is, we take these indicators, and then we go back and we put it into the principal eval. You probably have seen, when you think of the competencies for administrators, the 24 for principals are all... So all of these things then go back to those things that would be evaluated, they set particular goals based on those competencies. And so we take those, and then we put these goals into that eval system, and then link them directly into those indicators, to see the progress that is going on based on what they're reporting and sticking to the timelines. That stuff's not public. But I wanted to give you the whole picture, so that you see that there is alignment with this all the way through, from district goals, site goals, principal goals, all the way down. What's it all linked to? Students. 'Cause it all starts from those district goals. What I'm gonna have these guys do, and so I wanted to show, show you the district goals, this morning, we went through with the sites, or the staff, and went through the district goals with everybody. And then, what we had the principals do is, I went through this also. In the past, we've had, whether it's been called the I.L.T., the D.L.T., the vacant list, whatever, I mean, bottom line is, most of our district leadership has been based on instructional. And that's okay. We have to, we need that. But that means that we're missing from the operations side. So moving forward, and again, we didn't go through all of these committees, because this is a work in progress, but the deal, the instructional leadership, our existing team has seen it. So, we want to be able to show that we're setting this up so that all stakeholders have a voice in the process. And you're gonna see what that's gonna look like in general. And we'll add the amount of people involved in all of it as we go through the fall. So redefine the function and purpose to make sure that it's very strategic, making sure it's aligned to mission and beliefs, based on what personnel, what they have for jobs. For instance, probably do not need the head cook on the instructional leadership team. We probably want the head cook involved on the operations leadership. So again, it's looking at what positions, what is relevant for those positions. Making sure that not only, and this is where we have been, we have missed it, we just have not had enough involvement on this end. That's the one group of stakeholders, if you look at a lot of our policies, those of you on policy committee, you know, a lot of those policies talk about that you're supposed to have all these other stakeholders involved. And so moving forward, as we're talking about open communication and transparency and such, that's a key factor. So, with that in mind, a couple of the other, gotta get my glasses back on, like Mary Ann found out this morning, you know, if you're reading glasses, you can sometimes hit the wrong buttons, like this one, to get rid of everything really quick. Alright. So... Here is, I can't get to the right one here. Some of these are taking a little bit of time, because there's a few different, so this is what it will end up looking like in general, and I'll try to explain. So basically, what we'll be doing is defining and showing the alignment, so this is for the instructional side of things. So we know that we have district instructional leadership, and again, we don't know the makeup yet, we don't know how many people from the different stakeholder groups yet. This is more standing spots, it's not the names of the people in it yet. Okay? And we'll go through the fall, looking at what makes sense for... And we'll go through the fall, looking at what makes sense for the different ones. But it's with the idea that everything here on this page is on the instructional side of things. So as we look at the district instructional teams and the rotation, for instance, Dilworth Elementary for the two-year rotation may have an intermediate. The primary may come from Glendon Felton Elementary. Two years later, you flip-flop. So that over a course of four years, you always have people coming from those perspectives from both sides. You do the same thing, Quan Instruction, Exploratory, and Elective, Middle School and High School. Instructional Specialist, P E, Fine Arts, Special Ed, Guidance, Counseling, Paris, Notice. Operations Department, well, probably don't have maintenance involved in the instructional side. But we want tech, because that is gonna be pretty important as we're looking at instruction. So you get the right players at the table. You also look at the other stakeholders, that maybe we haven't had as much representation. And that's where the discussions, as we put this together. So as we look at the fall, school board, parents, non-parental community members, students, and we start factoring in what voices should be at the table for the different levels. Site D L Ts, or site instructional teams, world's best workforce committees, going all the way down to the fact of when you get into, as we move through this. Get the wrong button, of course. Too many buttons.
Up left.
Yeah. It's all right over here, right? And again, some of these will be adding more into it. These are just the ones that we knew that we already had. Continuing Ed, District Curriculum, Standards Committee. So as we come up with different things that we're seeing in our policies, that we have those committees, well, we better make sure, if we're actually saying we have this policy, that we actually make them active. So the idea here is also aligning the policies to make sure that you have the active committees to go with policies. If you're, if, as a board, we're having you pass policies, and then we don't even have a committee for it, that's when you're gonna run into problems at meetings, where, who's on that particular one. So this can all be public. So when this thing is really ready to go, by the time we hit Christmas break, because it's gonna take some time. When people click on this and just highlight over it, not only will people be able to see, okay, what's the makeup of the standing committee? When they hover over the actual committee, they'll see who's filling in at that time, the names of the people involved. And we can put this right on the website, so that people can see, here's the alignment, here's how every employee group has voice at the different levels. This is instruction. We do the same thing, there isn't as many committees, but we do the same thing when we get into operations. Operations, instead of it being by each elementary site, is more by the actual location. So the Glendon operations, the Dilworth operations. So again, you do the same thing, you wanna be able to have, when, instead of having people just put in the tickets and what else, and then two months later, people say, well, it's always been that way. There's no reason for that, because whatever the issues are at the sites should be able to be addressed every month and have all of the people represented, whether it be Paris, whether it be somebody from Food Service, Maintenance Department, whatever. Because you have them as a stakeholder addressing it. So that's what we'll be working on, that's what the staff will be working on. And we'll update the board, showing, okay, here's the progress, here's the recommendations for all of us, the type of committee structures for it. Now, you notice, every one of these things, these are all the personnel associated. It's the voice that you make sure that you have, all the voice. The one thing you'll never see on this in a structure, is you're never gonna see, quote, "a union position." Because it's different, this is about getting it back to kids directly. I've been a union officer when I was a teacher. It's a different, your job is collective bargaining. You may have somebody that's in a union officer in one of these roles. But it's just not wearing that hat. That's the only difference. So you're not going union, non-union. But you're hitting every one of the positions. Okay. Questions, like I said, these haven't been filled in yet, because this is where we get into, over the coming months, having the meetings, making some decisions, what makes sense. I can guarantee you that the whole admin cabinet will be meeting to start putting together recommendations on, okay, who do we think we need to have involved? When we start bringing in, especially on operations. You start bringing in the operation department heads. Okay, who else should they have then on the support staff? How many members do they recommend? What levels do they recommend? Because that's, on that side is gonna be, this is gonna be more heavy on this side, non-certified in operations, just like this side, more on instructional. So, questions in general for that? Again, this is more just, part of the report, wanted to make sure that you have an idea where the restructuring is going. Um, the site goals, next. And I'm going to, this is where the principals are taking over. Here's Lindsey, when you were bringing up before, the posters. So based on board action tonight, because the one thing I did wanna do is also make up some posters and have them hanging up all over in here. You haven't even approved them. So, this is what we've reviewed with all staff. This came out of the site leadership team, uh, work. So you notice the top part, we've got our mission, our district goals. And then what you'll see on each of them is, for the elementary, with the background of the entrances from the different buildings, from the entrances, elementary site, the middle school, the high school. And then their particular goals. So, elementary goals. These are the first two, both the Dilworth Elementary and the Glendon Felton Elementary. They're the same, they better be, because it shouldn't matter if they're fourth grader at one site or the other site. So anything you wanna expand on, Margot, regarding this?
You know, really just focusing on the, how the achievement piece aligns to the district. I mean, our schools are all about achievement, that's why we're here. And focusing on all students, and then the data to guide the instruction. We have to really focus on the students that are struggling, but we also have to focus on the student setup that need that enrichment as well. And really look at how the data we're getting, the numbers, um, what we know about those kiddos, academic, social, everything works together. All that's data, and we need to focus on providing that, that instruction to them, where they are, to get them to where they need to be. So really focusing on how that aligns with the mission and with the district goals. And then they continue to pursue and build positive relationships, to ensure proactive and purposeful culture. So we really wanna, we wanna get more away from reacting to issues and be more proactive, thinking about what our needs are of our kiddos, what are needs of our community, um, and focusing on pursuing those and going down those roads first, and then, instead of being reactive in the, in the, um, in the path, acting in the past. And again, we go back to our students, our staff, and the community, it's all those stakeholders. And, yep, Peg and I focused on aligning those, because again, it should be very similar, or the same between both of the, the elementaries.
So what you will be getting reports on then is, okay, so these are the goals. So as the reporting comes back to you on a monthly basis, it'll be, okay, what are the action plans to meet those goals? So remember when I'm showing you those indicators? Okay, so the indicators at the site level, those are public. So that's the stuff that's going to be, so in the same as an example, um, like, think of what the superintendent indicators. One of the indicators for me will be that we're looking at, when we get into the college and career readiness, part of expanding the opportunities, okay? We know that we've got Avid going, but we're also looking at, are there things that we can do with other school districts, expanding opportunities for kids? There's, uh, youth in government, there's particular programs on, uh, exploration opportunities for kids. So as we implement those programs, those are some of those action indicators, that, yeah, we are making those changes that are aligned to the different goals that were set. So you're gonna see that stuff in the action plans. Goals won't change, the actual action plans should be fluid. They should be updated all year long, and with timelines. Because every time that you get these reports, remember, we're putting them in with timelines. So don't feel bad about asking the questions. When will this one be, what's, when will that piece be done? Because it'll be in the action plans. Okay, we just can't make those action plans a full template public, because it's got those principal goals also. But the site goals, those are public. And that's what they will all be reporting, okay? Middle school and high school, um, middle school and high school, I don't know, who wants to go for it?
I would say that may, the, the, one of the differences, just by nature, would be the first school in middle school being that of continuing on with the philosophy of that middle school approach and agenda towards treating the entire child. And, uh, and as we take a look at the career and college readiness, that's kind of the feeder program for our programming. And we have alignment in our goals, we have similar agendas to what we want to infuse our, our curriculum with, but also our counseling services. That, um, we have that, those foundational blocks, so that as they get to the high school, college and career readiness becomes more of a meaningful journey. And I would kinda use for an example this morning. We, we have, especially for our first school there, um, as far as the, the, um, ensuring the college and career readiness. We have a lot of missed opportunities right now, because we have things that our staff are currently not all completely aware of, like our M C I S programming, that essentially sets up opportunities throughout their beginning in, in middle school, and creating kind of an e-folio of interest surveys, um, career, college readiness steps, and then also, what does that footprint look like? Places like Alexandria and, uh, and other schools, they actually have academies with students after they go through a series of, or readiness and interest surveys. They channel it to a particular path, so that their footprint is very deliberate. And then that spirals throughout each year, so these things, they don't just see when they're a freshman, and as they exit as a senior, but they come into touch with this stuff, um, and that planning, that deliberate planning, and choosing what kind of coursework is meaningful for them. So that when they leave here, it's meaningful and they get leverage, whether it's a career or college that they're going to be attending or being a part of in the workforce, that, you know, they reach that destination for a reason. Um, and with that ability to move back and forth, too. So when I say academies and those types of things, in, in Alexandria, they literally have like three or four, one might be Health and Science, one might be Communications and, um, Business. Another one might be Ag and Science, you know, those types of things. So the students, as they're freshmen, or even as an eighth grader, they're making choices to kinda take coursework that leads them to their goals, instead of randomly picking it up each year, going through the registration process, and at the end of it, thinking, well, you know, Margot took that, I wanna kinda sit next to her in class, you know? It, it takes that part of the mystery out of it for the kids as much as possible. So how do we do that with M C I S, we have ramp-up, we have other curriculum type of things. But then that leads us to our next few questions and anxieties, and that's kind of where the second one for the high school comes in. We've had a lot of informal conversations amongst the S L T and formal, as, you know, and one particular thing that sparked it the other day was when we had on the architecture mats, rooms for STEM and those types of things. Well, those are examples, and we know that it wasn't necessarily a concrete decision that had been made, but it made, it created a reflective conversation as to, what kind of influence do we, as a staff, wanna recommend for programming, and how does that programming affect the way we use our building? And we are going to be anticipating, over the next year, two years, unfortunately, um, losing due to great reasons, you know, people moving on, retirement, or other things, or just, um, other, other, whether it's attrition, or whether it's, uh, other professional opportunities. We're gonna be missing some very vital members of our teaching community here. Shortly, as we program and decide, what do we open up this opportunity for? How do we hire, what do we want to see in place for all of our kids? Things like even licensure and the availability of candidates start coming into play as well. So it's kind of a big, um, it's pretty obtuse right now. And hopefully, we can start shrinking those conversations, so that we can control a little bit more of a deliberate planning, um, opportunity for our kids. Again, for our kids, at the end of the day, how are we gonna be exiting them with 21st century skills that meet the current workforce and college expectations?
This second goal has a lot, it has a lot of potential. And as far as in the action planning piece, when you think of, think of that restructuring that we're talking about. Now, I bring that up for this reason, because in the past, we know that everybody has had, we've made it, we've tried to be very transparent, everybody's had this capital document, they can see the long-term planning, all the different tabs, whether it be, you know, looking at, um, facility improvements, uh, you name it, okay? I'm having to expand this, because your eyesight isn't, none of ours is that good. But, so, all of these different things we've had in the past, all these, so this, people have had at their disposal, capital improvements. Now, as we get into these operation meetings, at the, at the Glendon site, the Dilworth site, the district ones, what we're doing is we're expanding this of what these, uh, all of the personnel will have at their disposal to be looking at for planning, which will go hand in hand with your long-term facility maintenance, the stuff that everybody's gonna be seeing tonight. So one thing that we have to do is, I've taken the things that are more deferred maintenance items, like the parking lots, like the roofs, like the carpeting, the flooring, the painting of the walls, and all those things, uh, the plumbing, the UV, all, all of these different things that are deferred maintenance. And so the second piece that everybody will have is this. So when we hit operations meetings, everybody will still have the capital one, but they'll also have this one. So, remember the 10, when you think of the 10-year one, and one of the reasons, remember, from the state level, if those sheets that I gave you access to, and that we're going over tonight on the 10-year long-term facility maintenance, the requirement by the state, again, this is a work in progress from them, because we haven't had that, we've always had health and safety. We've always had new three-year planning on health and safety, for years we've had that. But now it's been expanded for all of these other ones. This is directly from those state forms. Some of you were asking about the finance or the numbers, those three-digit codes on that. Those are these. These are the way we have to report all long-term facility maintenance, all of our deferred maintenance. Has to be done by these fiscal categories. We have to be able to have reports, the state wants to be able to report, they wanna have comparative data on every school district, comparing what people are having to, based on the age of the buildings, electrical compared to hardware, interior surfaces, mechanical systems. They wanna know that the local school districts are taking time learning about it, figuring out long-term planning, planning for that. When you've got HVAC issues, when you've got the electrical, when you've got the plumbing, when you've got, uh, your different piping that, you know, uh, you know you're gonna be replacing. Okay, how much money is it? So here's what's coming. These are all of the descriptions of the work from the engineers. So when you think of the engineering reports that we have for, that identified all of the things and how much money we needed to probably plan to spend, I've taken all of that information, put it into this, so that as we have these committee meetings at the site and district levels, the committees, which will now have all the stakeholders represented, can start making decisions, when do we gotta start planning these things out? When do we wanna start looking at them? When do we want to start looking at our mechanical systems knowing it's $5 million at a site? How are we going to pay for it? Are we going to bond it? If we're going to bond it, how much of the payments are going to make that happen? So you've got all of this data and again, we're just touching this stuff now. We've never had this at our disposal. Everybody will have it, public will be able to see it. This will all be public data. Okay? It's all new. So the people who have the capital, they'll have the deferred maintenance. There's a third one coming. The third leg in this monster is the facility expansion. Now, we know that we've got a task force identifying different potential expansion. But those site teams will also do the same. So every department can have their recommendations. Now, it may not make the final list, but at least we know that it can be put into this in the same way we do capital. You know, we may have a department say, we must have more storage or we need the following amount of storage. They can say it. You put it in there. But maybe everybody else, all the other stakeholders go, you know what, this is a priority five on a five. It's not our top priority, but everybody had a voice. And we can show that, that everybody had that voice. Because it'll be on committees, they'll be in the committee structure. So this stuff will all be available as we go through the year and as we go through the longer-term plan. Lot to take in. Lot of stuff. This is, this is why there's been lots of data work that's been going on the last, this summer. Okay? Questions on this? So when we have a board work session just on facilities, all of this stuff is there so that we can have a discussion. Because when you look at that 10-year long-term facility maintenance and you look at those numbers on that and it shows like 80,000 here and 80,000 there, until you make a decision on what you're going to bond, it's just filling in numbers. I hate to tell you about five, six years down the road, it's filling in numbers based on we got 700,000 coming in. Well, we know we need so much to, 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 to all these. Now, once you make a decision you're going to bond, okay, take HVAC off. Now, we don't have to put any more plumbing, we can move it over to these other systems. So it's just projections. The most critical ones with operations that, with the numbers that you need are your actual yearly budget sheets. The 10-year ones, man, we project that stuff out. Just based on how much money we got coming in so we can kind of figure out what we have to be able, it's like you looking at your income as a family and deciding what kind of a mortgage payment can we handle over the next 10 to 15 years. Okay, that's the same thing you're doing tonight with this other one. I know this took a while, but this is kind of a big, big change in a lot of stuff. First time through. Thoughts? Feedback?
I just think it's very clear where everything is and if you have a question, you'll know exactly where to go. Well, is anything going to be done with this? And they can look on and say, oh, yep, they, they do have that in their plans of.
And they're going to have it.
Right, that's what I'm.
That's what's going to be nice is every, each of the sites, this is what they're going to be working with. And so they're going to have, when, when that leadership of each of those committees, if they think that, okay, we've got to do something sooner with these bathrooms over here, standalone project. Fine, make a recommendation. We want fiscal 19. We've got to do this here. And so then as that comes from the sites and then the district team decides, okay, we got 500,000 coming in. This is what we're going to work on. Everybody got the voice. And if you make up the committees right, that you get all the stakeholders involved, that means you also have community members. Because you put that right up to the public. So you get the structure with it. You align the policies. You look at the policies that we say we're going to have the following stakeholders involved. You make sure you show that they're involved. Policy says you would. That other document showing the committees that we have, showing what stakeholders are, shows that we did it. Now you don't have to take those phone calls from people, uh, uh, where do we go to?
Right, and you need the proof for the world, best workforce, anybody.
Exactly. Okay.
That was a whole lot of work, getting all that in there.
It's getting it, yeah, it's getting it from the minds to the papers. So that's, the reports I knew were going to take a while because there's just a lot there, but um, when you get to the action items, if you have more questions on it, feel free. And I will spend a little bit of time on the long-term facilities maintenance, just explaining some of that, walk you through on those papers, but.
And that deferred maintenance schedule, that was from LJA, correct?
Um, the deferred, that was from the K A work. Yeah, yeah, from the, the engineers from, from the architects and what else? Yeah, we took all that from the deferred maintenance. Yes.
It was the architects, engineers.
Exactly. Yep, I took all that over. And then the other pieces that I've added are the ones that we've identified locally. Uh, like the parking lot, we know we've got to deal with some of that. So as we keep looking at like the fifth grade cabinets, those of you who went on the operations tour, you know, hopefully you, you saw some of that. That stuff needs to be updated. Those are really, they just need to. So more deferred maintenance and it just needs to be on there. And then this way everybody can see, how does that get billed out? Why is it important? You know, building envelope compared to hardware, equipment, interior surfaces and such. So, that's it.
All right, we'll move on to 7.1, the approval of the August 14th.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second? A second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Now, moving on to the consent agenda under claims and accounts.
Uh, total bills to be approved at this board meeting are $286,010 and 1 cent.
All right. Moving on to our treasures report and fund report. We'll take a look at Minnesota liquid asset account. And the activities accounts. Donation from a Dean family dentistry, amount of $5,000 for the athletic complex scoreboard. Eastview Storage, DGF booster club, Glenn and Felton, um, that, for the athletic complex scoreboard and the Glenn and Felton Elementary Parent Group in the amount of $2,250 for the classroom books. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Hi Lindsay, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to 9.1, the policies. This is policy 503, student attendance. Policy 616, school district system accountability. Policy 618, assessment of student achievement. 619, staff development for standards. 623, mandatory summer school instruction. 624, online learning options. And this is the second reading for those policies. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Now, we're going on to the 9.2, the long-term facilities maintenance, senior plan.
Okay, so if you take a look at the sheets that you received, there's four that are in color. Four that are in color are the ones, if you'd look at those first. And then the fifth sheet is the expenditures itself. So what, what takes place and the reason that I, I, to be honest, it really doesn't matter to me whether you take action on it or not. This is more of an update and I figure every time that we update since we've got new numbers, I'd rather just bring it to you. And because you're going to be seeing this a couple of different times during the year as we, we walk through this. Really, the only difference between the numbers now compared to what you approved as part of the budget back in June is that you'll see right on the sheet at the top on the colored one, it says revised 717. That's because that came from the state. So the way it works is the state gives us a new update. We've then, and, and anybody can get this, okay? It's one of the data pieces that's available for everybody in the public. It's on M D's site. And so you see over on the upper left where I put in 2164. So this is a live document that we have to send back to them. So we basically, I go in, um, I put in our district number and then it just fills the information. So the lines that become critical, so compared to June to now, to these sheets, the only difference is that it extended out to 2027. That's the only difference. The new form just added one more year, folks. So what we're doing, what is different on the numbers is that they have given us new updates based on what we have imported as a district on our pupil units in EDRS, which is our system that we input the numbers. All of the enrollment projections. It's one of the most archaic old systems that there is out there. Unfortunately, it makes basic look like a, a new language in computer work. But so we put that stuff in line six. So when you look on the left side, you're seeing the line numbers. So when I say line six, you're looking at that current APU, average pupil units. Okay, so our pupil units, notice what I've done is just projected out from 2020 on the same amount of pupil units. Because until we know what we're doing with facilities and the fact that we have enrollment, open enrollment capping that we're dealing with, we're maintaining numbers. And that's why when you see the numbers on the revenue, they'll be the same from that point on. This is all based on the pupil units. Okay? So the lines that are important, where the, where some of this stuff comes from. Line number seven, district average building age. Our buildings on average 38.72. Anything that's, that's 35 years or older gives you the full amount you can get in the factor. If you have newer buildings, you get less because you don't have as much deferred maintenance. It's like getting a new car. You hope that you're not going to be replacing the engine soon. Less deferred maintenance on your vehicle. Same, same concept. So notice, line number nine, building age ratio. The best you can get is a 1.0. Well, we got a 1.0 because we're over 35 years of age. Makes sense? All right, so then line 10 is initial revenue. And you're basically multiplying these different factors. Now, what, the lines that to me are important to be looking at, line number 12. That's the debt service. That is based on the fact of previous projects that we're paying for. So if we've had deferred maintenance, so you think of the energy efficiency project that took place in 2009, 10 and finished up in 2011. Okay, that project we're paying bonds on. That's the alt facility project that the board approved. Okay, that's the non-voter approved project. So that's the payment for it, 287,000. So that has to be taken out the top when you look at your total money. So far, so good?
Yep.
Page two. Page two, it's a simple one, one line. This is with the new law. Notice what's happened when you compared to the old money that was coming in on line 10 from the first page. Line 10 on the first page, you had a lot less money. Compare that to line 20D. Because line 20D is under the new revenue program, long-term facility maintenance, which has been implemented over three years. It includes an increase in a levy, but it's equalized. So remember, this is the one that we got from 100 and some bucks to 200 and some bucks to 300 and some bucks per pupil unit over three years.
Why the decrease in 2027?
2027 decrease, it just hasn't been updated yet with their new number. Because it, it, it will end up being the same amount. Um, but it's a good catch.
No, off of that number, that's, we take that number there and we are subtracting the 287048, correct?
Yep, so what you're going to see on the third page, here's where it starts playing out a little bit. Notice that if you go to line 30, you're going to see those totals are going to be the same as line 20. Okay? It's because we do not, all lines 21 through 29, we're under the old formula. Doesn't matter. What they do is they say, if you happen to be able to get more money off the old system, you will get the greater of the two. Well, we're not going to get more money on the old system. So we get the better. So line 30 is a total amount of money coming in. So line 32, district long-term facility maintenance revenue. And then of course you just keep on, we don't have any intermediate districts and all that until we get to line 34. Those of you who've seen the levy sheets have seen that some of these are repeated over and over again in a few places. Okay? So line 34, you get to the grand total. All right, now, when we get down below, the, this is where you see the breakdown of how much is levy and how much is aid. And that is based on, like many formulas, a critical one is line 38. The adjusted net tax capacity per pupil unit. So you had, take the whole amount of what amount of property wealth do you have in the district? You divide it up by how many kids you're serving and you compare that to the state average. So the more property poor you are, the more of the money is going to be aid. And the less is going to be levy. Because you don't have the capacity. It would be more of a burden on the local taxpayers. So when you look at lines, so you see the equalization factors as you get into 41, 42. So notice, local share, 48.53% on line 41. State share, 51.47. Now, why it's critical is that when you think back to your bonding before, you've had bonding where it's been 100% local. All of a sudden, now you're getting state aid on this. So this was a huge plus for outstate Minnesota, for greater Minnesota when this came about. Because it's things we had to do anyway.
So this reflects the age of our buildings too.
Exactly, that's that equalization is, all of that is factored in. How old the buildings are, how property wealthy the district is to get the equalization. All of those are factors on how much money you're going to get and what the ratio is of aid and levy.
And since we're on line nine, we're at one. I would anticipate any addition or anything that we would do would still keep our age of our school. But then like say we built that pre-K whatever, say that would have gone through.
Yes.
We would be at like 20 years.
Exactly. Any, now the pre-K probably, you know, one thing is if it's, if it contains K through 12, it's a, if you just did something with just early childhood and, and didn't have the rest, then that's different.
Yep.
But so like anything you put a brand new building, it will adjust it. Yes.
Lower.
Yep, every time there's a new building, um, and again, you don't, you don't get kicked as bad if it's just, um, additions.
That was my next, that was my next question.
You don't run into that same issue on the additions as you do when you're putting the brand new buildings. Great, great, but they look at your square footage.
Right.
So, does this help?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see that what's happening is our revenue, um, you can see the breakdown of, of how much it is. Um, you see the state aid on line 44. Um, and where, and notice we still, line 49 still has your debt service. And the one that's critical and I've gone in and. And the one that's critical, and I've gone in and put that one in yellow on line 57. Because when all said and done, when we subtract the amount of the debt service payments from our total revenue, that's telling you what's left for general funds spending on all of your long-term facility maintenance. So, line 57 are the totals. Now, if you take the black and white sheet on the expenditures and you compare the numbers and you compare the numbers on fiscal '18, moving on, 1920, on, at the bottom of your expenditures, basically what I have to do is I go in and I look at the projects that we have on the docket, and we build projections of how much we think we may need. And again, these are just starting points, but the numbers have to jive. So, fiscal '18, we know that we have a total of $536,299 coming in of revenue. Well, pretty good chance we better have that same total in the total expenses.
Can you carry over any money to the next?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, yes.
I just have a question back on the last page.
Yep.
When you finished your thought there.
No, no.
Okay. So, when that payment on 49 is done, that $287,048, we're not bringing in more revenue, we're just, we'll be done with that payment in 2027, correct?
Will it more available for the general?
General.
Yep.
So, it doesn't go up, the revenue doesn't go up because we're getting the same state aid.
We're matching it up.
Yeah. We're just not going to have that payment.
Yep.
Okay.
So, do we like, you know?
Just payments gone, nothing comes back. We just have that money available.
Yeah. We didn't lose any more revenue because of it. We're still going to get the 300 and some, and as we have more pupil units, the revenue will go up. Because remember, it's 300 and some bucks per pupil unit. So, we get updates on this as, you know, this is the monitoring that we have to, you know, geez, when you see me come in with the, looking at our pupil units and what else on a monthly basis, and when I talk about losing 50 pupil units, there is a reason why that causes a little bit of anxiety and blood pressure rise because 50 units, 50 pupil units is a big impact. It's $400,000, but it also affects everything else. Not only the total amount of money, but it affects the aid levy ratios. So, you know, it's something we have to monitor so closely. And we do spend a lot of time, sometimes we spend a lot of time in the district office on it. Okay. So, these are, it's simply, as we go through the year, folks, what we're able to do and what the operations is able to do, and you as a board, we will be looking at these categories. Again, the numbers that are in these projections here, we could move $80,000 over from one of the other ones, you know, like from mechanical systems. I, you know, I've got just $80,000 in each year. We're not going to get a mechanical system thing done for $80,000, okay? Little things. But, when we get into some of those big projects, the HVAC and the $5 million projects, how would you do when you don't have $5 million coming in without doing a bond?
The entrance to the middle school is what, $125,000?
Right.
That was the bathrooms, $125,000.
Exactly. So, what we do is we just say, okay, in general, now, can we carry over money? Yeah. But, if we wait to do a $5 million project by storing up this kind of money, we're going to have a lot of things go by the side.
Right.
So, instead, what we end up doing is we can go and make a bond based on the same thing that we all do as families. You do it based on a mortgage payment that you're going to pay something off over the next 15, 20 years, the investment in the future. So, if you have $5 million of HVAC issues, you bond for it and you make so much. The reason that it'll be good for the operations at the site levels and the district level to take pride on this stuff is when we start having discussions about whether we put something into a bond or not, we have to decide how many years we're going to do it for and what are the other things we need to leave money for. Because you've got to look at these other categories that you say, okay, we're still going to have so much every time in parking lot. We need to spend so much every year so that it doesn't get behind on us. So, you still say, okay, we're going to put $20,000 in and just do so much to the parking lot each year.
The non-voter bond of $7.3 million, that would take care of some of this, but what would that do to, well, what would that do to the white sheet, uh, very bottom? What would that do to all those numbers? The $7.3 million bond to take care of some of those things that we wouldn't actually have to do voter approval because it's a zero net tax capacity to businesses and residents.
I make sure I'm understanding.
The $7.3 million bond option?
Yep.
That's non-voter required because it's a zero tax capacity to businesses and residents.
And where that would be coming from, Scott, is when you look at your revenue sheet on that line 57. So, line 57, that shows you how much you're going to have in the general fund available on a yearly basis. So, what you have to, what we have to look at is how much of that do we want to leave for the projects compared to how much for a bond payment?
So, we'd fix one big thing, but we wouldn't be able to afford fixing all the rest of it.
Bingo. Without having to do, because that's the issue about the $15 million in deferred maintenance, and this is showing how much money you're going to have coming in over 10 years. So, you know you've got about $7 million coming in. This is where that $7 million came from, that whole voter piece. But, that means you're leaving nothing else. You know, if you put that into the bond for like an HVAC, there's $5 million gone. What else did you get done with it? So, how else are you going to do it without going to voters to get the rest of the $15 million done?
Just a big band-aid.
So, at least this way you know exactly how much money you've got coming in to help with it without moving anything forward to the voters. And again, we're going to want a work session just talking about this stuff in more detail. But, I wanted to bring it to you tonight, so, and again, I don't, you know, I like having the board approve this stuff as we go through it just because this is no different than what you've already approved other than adding one more year, but I wanted to have a night where we can actually have a little bit more detail about it so that as we get into operations meetings, you guys have a little bit more of a lead on it. Because this is new stuff. Any other questions for me on that?
So, you're looking for a motion to approve the tenure or you're saying?
Yeah. I, because the thing is, all I would do is anytime we have an approval by the, by the board, that I just send down a new one down to the state and just say, here's our latest update. Just because then they have the latest data coming back from us in our planning.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. So, do I have a, okay, Scott made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Any more discussion or any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.3, student handbooks. This is the second reading of the 2017-18 kindergarten through fifth, sixth through eight, and nine through 12 student handbooks, including extracurricular activities in the handbooks. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second? I will second. Any questions?
And I would say the only thing, just so you know, you can plan that the high school handbook will have to come back to the board as soon as 6:20 is coming back to the board because we have to have that handbook to line to 6:20. So, just know that'll come in a couple of months.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. On 9.4, district and site goals, to approve the district and individual site goals as we had seen on the screen, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Lindsay and a second.
I'll second.
Okay? Bye Bobby. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.5, we're looking at approving the school board appointment process, and this is something that I would like to mention a few things. I was voted as board chair because of the experience that I have on the board. And those of you that are new on the board, I hope that I've answered emails and questions and things like that that you have had. I know when MSBA come, came up and asked us as far as what we do, as far as mentoring and things like that, one of the questions that we talked about that night was the opening of that vacancy. MSBA recommended that the board chair, their first recommendation was that the board chair receives the authority to appoint. I know that it was brought up as far as potentially looking at appointing someone who has no experience. That, in my opinion, would not benefit this board one drop. We have new members that are learning. It takes years to learn the ins and outs with the board. So, it would be unjust for somebody to come in, fill that position until possibly Rich comes back. So, I would like the authority, I would like the authority to be given to me to appoint. So, that's what I'm asking for.
I didn't necessarily hear the suggestion that the MSBA appoint one person to appoint somebody to this board position. That's not what I heard in that meeting.
That is what she said first.
You're the only one that heard it. I didn't hear it that way either.
I didn't hear it that, I feel as though discussion was encouraged.
You guys were?
I heard that as one option, I'm just going to say.
One option.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one of two options.
Right.
Three, actually, but.
What was it there?
Well, we could interview.
Yeah, that's.
Or just appoint. You had the option.
So, you did hear it?
Not that she had the total authority to appoint, no. At least not completely. We were going to talk about it first, which is what we're doing right now.
Right. And I do have a candidate, I do have somebody who is willing to fill in. This person has 24 to 26 years of experience on the board. He has served on the task force. The only way he wanted to come back was for the, for the kids. Nothing else. He has no motive of any kind other than being willing to serve. Anybody who has worked in our district for any amount of time know this person and holds him in high regards. Ronnie Tang is top-notch, just the straightest shooter you ever wanted to see. Numbers guy, trustworthy, and I would like to have someone else on the board with some experience to help mentor.
And I reached out to a couple of people in Felton, didn't tell them why, but just wanted to get their personal opinion on Ronnie Tang, and had nothing but high regards and positive comments.
I don't know the guy, I'm not going to lie, I don't. I've heard good things, but I don't know him, but.
I do have some seasoned people, some teachers in the, do you mind sharing? I put you on the stop, on the spot. You've worked with Ronnie over the years.
I'm a little afraid to speak to be perfectly honest.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. You can totally keep your comments to yourself, that's fine.
Okay.
I guess my, my question is, and this is what I struggle with.
Yes.
I'm from a farm family. Amy's from a farm family, and I know the stress that is involved during September, October, and November. And we're asking someone to come on to the board that when it's go time, it's go time. It's, you can't stop, you don't stop harvest to come to a board meeting.
Right.
That, that is my concern because if we are going to bring someone in for potentially three months, if he can't make the commitment to be here, and understandably why he can't make the commitment, I mean, I live in a household with a farmer. I don't want him to feel like he's letting us down. Do you know what I mean? If we ask him to, to do that. Honestly, I'm looking at my fall schedule. I don't know how I'm going to get here and work and kids and farm. It's a, it's a big thing to ask, and I appreciate Ronnie and his service to this board, and I understand that he's fantastic at financial, financial stuff. I just don't want to put him out when he's trying to get his crops off. That's my concern.
And then our next step would be to leave the board as six, zero. Six members and not appoint. Because it would not make any sense to put somebody on who has no experience to serve, like you said, possibly three months.
Did he, did he say he couldn't do it as a farming or not?
No, he said there may be a time that he isn't able to, but knowing Ronnie, I mean.
I'm fine with leaving it at six in the hopes that Rich does make it back.
In your 12 years of being on the board, there's, you don't have, is there anybody else that you would consider asking to see if they would come forward?
Ronnie Tang would be my top pick.
Okay. There's no second?
Have we thought about Doug Frankie, Sandy?
I, I did, I was on the board with Doug Frankie 13 years ago with him. I just know that Ronnie has been on the task force. I mean, he has been at our meetings. He reads, he reads the minutes. I mean, I have been in contact with Ronnie over the last years since he has been off the board, and he has totally kept on, on what is happening in our district. So, I'm very confident in him being able to just step right up. Again, it's the mentoring.
Can I ask, what, what would be your number one thing that Ronnie could bring to us new board members?
He is trust. He is so trustworthy. And he is a thinker. When it comes to anything, Ronnie will not give you an immediate response. He researches, he figures things out before he comes up. He's not a yes man by any means. He, he will politely disagree with you on something, and you just move forward and move on with that. So, that is why I'm saying that he's definitely, I, I worked with Ronnie for 11 of my 13 years on the board.
I, not to bring this up, but we've been basically functioning as a board of six for, since January. That's my concern. What would a person coming in for three months do, do to our progress? I'm not saying for organs, I'm just putting it all out there for all of us to think about.
Right. And I know one of the things that MSBA, we talked about was mentoring. We wanted mentors. He's an awesome mentor.
Well, I think we need a seventh. You know, in terms of who it is, I don't know any of these folks, I don't. But, I think we could use a seventh of experience. I'd rather go further back, experience. Because I think we made it pretty clear at the work session, correct?
That we wanted experience?
Well, if we wanted experience, it would have to be further, you know, back, is I think what was decided.
So, then I will make a motion to approve Ronnie Tang as the, appoint Ronnie Tang as the existing vacancy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed.
Aye.
Records 33, we will remain a board of six. And thank you Ronnie Tang for your willingness to do this. Looking at board comments, future agenda items, we have a fiscal personnel committee meeting on Monday, September 11th at 5:00, and that's the Delaware site, followed by the meeting at, how does that say, 5:02?
I ran error.
That should say 6:00.
Right.
Okay. Followed by the meeting at 6:00 o'clock. Any further discussion? Any things to put on there? Okay. All right. Meeting ended.